Good evening, everyone. We're going to call the meeting to order at 7:01 PM. Madam, Madam Clerk, please call the role.
Trustee Burns?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
I'm going to ask that everyone silence their devices, please. And as we proceed with the agenda, we will now have the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to move down to item number three, and that's the approval of minutes due to clerk Debbie Williams.
At this time, we're going to ask for an approval to approve the general proceedings for the April 22nd, 2025 regular board meeting.
No more? You can, that's not a motion. Just making a recommendation.
I made my recommendation. I need a motion.
No, that's not a motion. You're making a recommendation.
I'm sorry. Making a recommendation that will be approved for the general proceedings for April 22nd, 2025.
May I have a motion to accept the recommendation of clerk Williams?
No more.
Okay, let me recognize trustee Johnson.
Second.
And now may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, trustee Burns. We have a motion and a second on the floor. Are there any discussions on that matter? Hearing none, trustee Williams, please call the role.
Trustee Burns?
Yes.
Trustee Jones? That's in the moment. Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Seth?
Yes.
Trustee Sterling?
Thank you.
Okay, this time I'd like to make a recommendation that we approve the general proceedings for the April 28th, 2025 special board meeting, 6:00 PM A.M.
May I have a motion?
No more.
Trustee Johnson, move. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. It's been properly moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the role.
Trustee Jones? She's not here.
You can come back.
Okay. Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Seth?
Yes.
Trustee Sterling?
That's them.
Trustee Burns?
Yes.
We have a motion on the floor. We're looking at item 3B to approve the meeting, general proceedings for April 28th, 25. That is the first meeting at 6 o'clock. Do you agree?
There was a 6:00 PM meeting that we had that signed that off. Came back within hours, which was the 7:00 PM. So you were here since you just came in.
Thank you. Let's move to item 3C.
Okay, this time we're going to ask for a recommendation to approve the general proceedings for April 28th, 2025 special board meeting, 7:00 PM, inaugural sitter meeting.
May I have a motion to approve the general proceedings for April 28th, 25 at special meetings?
No more.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or debate? We don't do that. Thank you. As I said, it's been moved and seconded. Any debate or questions? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the role.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Seth?
Yes.
Trustee Sterling?
Yes.
Trustee Burns?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yes.
Thank you, moving on. It's time for public comment. All questions and comments must be directed to me. Each speaker may comment on any matter concerning the business of the solid village municipality. Each speaker is allowed one opportunity to speak for up to three minutes and may not engage in debate, counter replies, or rebuttals. I will respond to questions once all public comments have concluded. The first person, please come to the mic. You may need to turn it off.
Tracy Witt? I was just wondering when the public works are going to pick up branches? That's I have.
And Sterling? Please think quietly. Thank you.
Good evening. Okay? David Fields? Good evening, Madam Mayor, Board of Trustees. Madam Mayor, I was listening to you when you say that you stand for truth, honesty, fairness. Above all things, you stand for these residents. But, Miss Mayor, if all of this is true, seems like the fair thing to do is looking into the agenda for the vacant seat. If you're really truthful about what you say, wouldn't it the honest thing to do? It's the next highest vote getter. When this election took place, should that be the person that you should be appointed to that seat, to that vacant seat? Instead of appointing someone that didn't even make the ballot? That the residents didn't even vote for? If it's true that what you say, the next highest person that was in line that had the most votes from this village should be the next person that should be appointed for that seat? At least their name should be brought up. Instead, like I said, instead of someone that didn't even make the ballot. Now, if we're going to be right, let's do it right. Because after all, that's what you say you're standing for. So if you're going to stand for truth, honesty, and doing the right thing, let's do the right thing. That person's name should be the person's name-
Sorry, you're repeating yourself.
That should appear on for this appointment for the trustee's seat.
You've made your point.
And, Madam President, within these three minutes, I can repeat myself as many times as I like.
You mean not today?
I still have three minutes, Madam President.
You're using up your time.
I still have three minutes.
You're using your time.
All right then.
One minute.
So again, like I said, that should be the person's name that should be coming back for that seat, for that appointed seat? If that is what this is really all about.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Board of Trustees, Arnold Coleman residence. Buzzword that was shared by the previous speaker was fairness. Another thing I want to bring about, I want to talk about in terms of being fair. We have a vendor in our midst who's been a vendor with this village for over a year who has not gotten paid. Let me repeat that. He's been working here for a full year and has not gotten paid once. That vendor is our very own Inspector General. I understand there's a check on the desk of the mayor, on the mayor's desk with his name on it awaiting to be signed. Like, the question is, is when will that signature take- or that signing take place? And secondly, the last thing I want to talk about is just a quick question. When are we going to have the first budget meeting for 2025? It's near June of 2025, and we'll be six months into this year. So my question is this simply. When are we going to have our first budget meeting? Thank you.
Anyone else?
Jeffrey Burns, Board Member, District 116. I just have one question, Madam Mayor. I just need to know the definition of appointment. That's all, because it seems like some people don't understand what appointment means. So I just need to know, does appointment got anything to do with voting? And what's the definition of mayor's appointment? Thank you.
Anyone else?
David Smith, resident. First to comment. Any trustee that is appointed to the Board must be appointed with the advice and consent of the Board. So that's how that process plays out. It takes an approval from the Board. Moving forward, regarding our internal general, internal auditor, I should say. I spoke on this last week, and I'm going to say this again because at this point, I believe some negligence has taken place and the village is going to be at risk of a default judgment, which is going to cost us some money. Our internal auditor currently has a lawsuit pending against the village. All of his frivolous charges and complaints were dismissed, except for one. The court, and I have a copy of the court order right here, which was issued May 5th, 2025, issued a decision. They dismissed all of his frivolous charges, except for one. They asked for an answer from the village by today, May 27. My question is, has any of our legal counsel put in an answer? And if not, why? Secondly, regarding our internal auditor and regarding how he's been operating outside the scope of his, what he was contracted to do. There's been a lot of talk about trustees not answering their village emails or their emails at all. And a lot of people don't know what's been going on behind the scenes. A lot of people don't know that two of our new trustees don't have village emails right now. A lot of people don't know that trustee Johnson was currently- she was locked out of her email until today. I have email evidence right here that shows that our internal auditor, I won't say his name, our internal auditor caused that lockout. And I want to know, why was he given that authority or that privilege? Why was he put in a position to compromise the emails and the communications of three trustees? It's awful funny that three trustees are being crucified and criticized on social media and everywhere else, including right here in public comment, when in actuality, the criticism lies at the feet of our internal auditor. And realistically speaking, to appoint that same person to village administrator, who has also been accused of the alleged $78,000, which I also have printed documented proof of, is just, it makes no sense. Those accusations need to either be verified, proven, or disproven before he's put in any sort of authority capacity within the village. And to me, that makes common sense. I don't know about everybody else, but it does to me.
Okay. First budget meeting will be in June. Our pitch could be it was to start May 1st, not in January. So we're not that delayed, even though it's delayed. But I promise you, we will be on it. In terms of the definition of appointment, I am not going to insult the intelligence of the adults that sit in this space by giving them the definition of the word appointment. And if it's lacking on some of your parts, I invite you to go to Google, even, and get that definition. But I'm not going to do that. We talked about the trustee appointments this way already, so I'm not going to deal with that. The OIC default judgment, as that is an active case, then I do not believe that it would be beneficial or would it be fair or the correct thing to do to discuss open litigation in an open meeting? So I am sorry, I can't do that. In terms of the emails, know that it's not just two new trustees that did not have access to email. Know that existing ones have not had access to a village email either. There are two who has been here for two, three years. And one has never had access. She uses her own personal. So I wouldn't take that personally or as if there is an active case of us attempting to do wrong by someone. We're not. Know that. The laptop that's on my desk right now is my laptop from home. Why? Because the laptops on the desk aren't working for you. They're not working. And so I have to do the next best thing. Use what I have in order to get the job done. And that did not happen just recently. I worked from home when I was the village clerk almost every day for a portion of the day because my computer system here failed me on a regular basis and I was able to be much more productive at home. So no, we don't have any nefarious intentions at all. In terms of the internal auditor acting as a manager, I won't say that he was acting as a manager. I would say that he was helping wherever the need was. I am thankful that we have a couple of residents and a trustee who comes in on a regular basis, I mean daily, to assist, to take care of items that need to be taken care of. No one else has stepped up to the plate. And we would be crushed if it wasn't for Mr. Finch. I said this last week, and I'm saying the same thing. The story doesn't change. Right now, just so that residents know, I've had to recreate village permits and certifications. I've had to recreate business licenses. We don't have the needed individuals housed in this space right now that can assist or do the things that used to be done. So I pick up wherever I can. Others are picking up as well. And all I can say is we've got to be thankful that they are willing to put in their time and effort. Otherwise, we will, would be demolished. And I'm not going to speak on that again because I spoke on it last week as well. I have absolutely no idea where the corporate authorities are. But you better believe I will be communicating with them tomorrow. But if you can remember, and I'm not just going back to the past, but if you remember, we certainly came almost two years straight without the corporate authorities with us if they didn't have a point of business to take care of or they did not need to provide us updates in executive session. And we made it through, just as we're making it through right now. Praise God. I want to thank Mr. Seth personally for your comments and your words of encouragement. They're very much appreciated, as well as Reverend Dr. Reverend Donna Creary. You're very encouraging. Your words are very inspirational. And I can only hope that those who heard you repeat what you say and that we proceed forward in a very admirable manner going forward. Mr. Howard, you gave an actual report. You didn't ask- I'm not certain if he's different. But he didn't ask any questions. I did take notes because I've not seen this report. He's not provided a report. So I was taking notes so that I can follow up on some of the actions that he said that he has been responding to. And thank you, clerk Williams. But as soon as I got finished with this, I was going to share with all of you that I was going to miss. And that is, I skipped over item 1C. So I am going to ask our pastor Pitts to come up and bring meditation for us now.
Madam President, if we could, I was going to debate on the next question.
I said it will be in June. I don't have a date. I'm sorry, everything that I needed to say, that I don't have the exact date, but I did say in June. Thank you. And then, please do me a favor. Don't do that again. Don't shout out with me.
Well, because I expected you to answer.
I answered. Maybe you just sit here. And I don't want to be contentious. But I did say June. I did. But I gave you some more information as well, so, okay? Thank you, sir. In June. Pastor Pitts, please bless our souls.
Yes, I'm going to ask those that will or can stand, if the Board wants to sit or they can stand, whoever desires to stand. Or everyone right now. Just give me a few seconds so I can hear what the Lord is telling me to say. Because sometime, we can get up here and say anything. And I do not want to do that. I want to say what the Lord has me to say, what's pertinent to what's going on here. Give me, please, just a few seconds. Gracious God, we come to you this day. Lord, I ask this in the name of Jesus. That you bless each and every one in this building, especially our Board and each and every trustee, our village clerk and our mayor and everyone that is under the sound of my voice that is in this room. Lord, I come praying and asking of thee to help us to have an ear to hear what is happening and what is going on. That everyone here understands that we are here for the betterment of our village. I count it a privilege to stand before you, to even pray. Because we all have situations and things in our lives. So I'm praying for the village. I'm praying for each and every one here that we do the right thing, that we come about having love, peace, and togetherness, that we do what's best for this village. Lord, please order the rest of words that come out of my mouth, that each and every one that is standing in the need of prayer, that we need you, God, above all. And we need each other, that we come together and make this village work. As I stand here praying, Lord Jesus, answer my prayer right now. Because I believe you answer everybody's prayers. We just don't like the answer. But you do answer us. Accept the answer and move on. This is my prayer. I pray in the mighty name of Jesus. Thank God. And amen. You may be seated. God bless you.
Will they receive that? Thank you, Pastor Pitts. I'm moving on with the reports of officers. And I will start with my report. I have about six items under the report. However, the very first one would be asking for a motion to appoint an interim village administrator. And that person is Anthony Finn. May I have a motion?
No more.
I'm sorry, you made a second. Thank you, it's been moved and seconded. Any questions? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call the role.
Trustee Seth?
Yes.
Trustee Sterling?
No.
Trustee Burns?
Yes.
Trustee Jones? Trustee Johnson?
No.
I would like to exercise executive privilege at this point by appointing Mr. Finch as an interim for 90 days. The next motion that I have that I'll be asking for is a motion to appoint Tanya Winston for a two-year term to fill the vacant trustee position. May I have a motion?
No more.
May I have a second? Any questions? Come into a debate.
Motion to table.
No more. I'm sorry. Can you guys give me an opportunity to call my votes? You call what I need to call. Thank you. I'm going to say this. I don't know- I don't know what the motion to table will do, simply because of time constraints. And just for the record, know that we need to move forward with this appointment, either yea or nay. You can vote nay. But to table infringes upon the mayor's ability to appoint in a tiny manner. And I'm not going to be held hostage. So, I am asking for reconsideration of that motion to, really, I think what you meant is to postpone, not to table. I'm asking for reconsideration before I call the vote.
Can't table. This is your appointment. You cannot table. This is a limited time to move forward. You cannot be tabled.
I think this is one of those times when our corporate authorities would have been well-served to have been here. We would have been well-served by them. Yes, no?
Ma'am, you have a motion and a second already. So, I'm not giving that vote.
You can't do that.
I can't table. I can't table.
No.
And I got a motion for a second.
No.
Second. Have you called a question?
No, I never called for a second. I had to correct. No, I never called.
Doesn't really matter. The second was already announced on the floor. Call the question.
It wasn't.
Madam Clerk, can you please call a question for the table?
There is a motion and a second on the floor, and we need to take a vote. That's the only thing that we have to deal with at this moment. There's a motion and a second. The clerk's, the clerk's position at this time is to call the roll. That is it.
No, I called for a table.
You cannot call for a table when there's a motion and a second. Excuse me, Trustee Johnson. The procedure is, once there's a motion and a second, there's a court.
I'd like to ask for a final.
Call the question.
I'd like to ask for a final recess and talk.
Once there's a motion and a second. The next step is call the roll. So, proceeds your motion to have five minute recess. All in favor?
Aye.
Do you think on that one?
Aye.
Thank you. We will reconvene the meeting at eight o'clock PM. We acknowledge that all trustees and all who were present at the beginning are still present. And the motion to table stands. However, excuse me. Excuse me. Thank you. We've got business to be taking care of up here. Thank you, sir, for understanding. There was a motion to table on the floor. I will now ask for a second. And I'm going to ask the clerk to call the roll.
Trustee Sterling?
Yes.
Trustee Burns?
No.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Seth?
No.
That motion carries. I will bring the motion again next week. And that will be what I consider for real, for real this time, the second attempt. And then I get one more, which is the third attempt, when I will make the appointment and it won't be tabled. It won't. We'll go circuit court on this, okay? Because we're not going to just do just what we want, how we want, when we want to do it. Now, I have another appointment. So, that was for Finch. Now, I have a motion to appoint Tanya Winston for a two-year term. I'm sorry. See, they're, they're getting me.
That's okay. So, Mr. Pitts said a ninety-day appointment. And um, be late and um, Tanya Winston is the motion to the table.
Exactly. Next week. Okay. The other things that I have, I would like to announce some new hires that we have this week. We, hear me. We now have at least two code enforcers. Another one should come on part-time very soon. Both of them are, two of them are part-time. One is full-time, which is like a director over code enforcer. And the code enforcer that we had came from a couple of other villages where she was able to do some inspections and all of that. So, we really got lucky there. And I'm giving you all that warning as I did because you guys have had grace for about a year. And some of you have just been doing whatever, leaving your garbage. I see people shaking their heads. Leaving your garbage cans out, gutters hanging, whatever. They're on the street. So, act accordingly. Let's work to beautify our community, okay? Uh, trustees, you have in front of you a quick start guide. To write a new report, I decided I would go use a smaller volume than that big large one that was used before with the hopes that you could have looked at that. Now, this is how to use it. I would hope that you come with any chance. And just like we just had the little, the man there. I, in the future, I would like to see each one of you to have become so familiar with it, the location of the items, that when there's something in question, you pick up the book and you refer to it. So, that's that.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, first of all, I'd like to say it was absolutely a fantastic, beautiful celebration. I was so honored to be a part of it with all the men and women and people sitting in for their family members who are, were no longer here. It was, it was touching, very touching. I think the one thing, the strongest thing I walked away with was each one of them said that they gave it all for their country and they did whatever their country asked them to do. They didn't have a choice. Their family didn't have a choice to let them go away. They had to go away. And they fought hard. And they couldn't say, well, I'm not going to go to work today or I'm not going to do this or that today. They knew what they had to do, but they did it. And they, they did it out of love for their country. And we all need to just realize, we don't always have a personal choice to do what we think we should do. We have to do a choice of what our country, our village, our state needs us to do. Because if we're not together as a community, or as a state, or as a federal government, then there's no hope for us. And the one thing that we do need right now is hope, prayer, and faith. And these people, they had their, a couple of them were in tears and a couple of them brought tears to us. Because when you think back to those days, those were pretty trying days all the way around. But these men and women, they gave of themselves. It was just touching. And we, and many of them said, and we take advantage of that now. We really do. We don't live like they had to live. And we have everything free to us. And we have them to thank for it. So, before you make decisions that impact your community, like whether or not you should sign that list on the back of the table? Yes, you should sign that list on the back of the table. Because the other way that we're going to become a community is that we work and play together, okay? It's not all about the trustees. It's not all about the mayor and clerk. It's not all about the department heads of staff. But once we start working and playing together, you're going to see this, this, this community grow and prosper. So, please, like the mayor said, don't leave without signing up for a committee or two. Please. And second of all, um, on the back table is the latest soft talk, which was the May soft talk. Uh, we've been coming out in the middle of the month. Now, we're going to start coming out at the first of the month. I'm going back to the first, okay? Today was the deadline for the June first soft talk. I know everybody let that go because we've all been dealing with our transitional period. So, of course, deadlines will be extended for everyone again. My thing is just, please give me something that our residents can see. Because we're not only giving it on the front tables and um, on our Facebook pages, now I'm asking for people to send their email addresses to dwilliams@softvillage.org. I will email you the soft talk every month to make sure that we're communicating to you. We're trying to find ways to get information. That's been the biggest problem in Soft Village, communicating with our residents. So, if you send me your email address, not only will I send you the soft talk, but any other information the mayor's office would like to present or anything anybody else asks me to present. And also with our largely growing Spanish community, I have also created a Spanish soft talk. Those are in the hallway. I didn't put them on this table because last week, some people grabbed the Spanish soft talks instead of the English ones. And they got home and they couldn't read it. But they are also available. If you have Spanish-speaking neighbors, friends or families, have them email me and I will make sure that they get that and any other information that we can communicate to you. And I want to say thank you all. This, this room looks fantastic. We haven't seen this room like this in a long time. So, I encourage everyone to keep coming to the meetings, keep holding us accountable, keep coming to the mic. Because Reverend Freeman and, and former trustee Sapp, you're absolutely right. We've got to be better. We got to do better. And I, for one, have stopped going on Facebook, commenting on anybody's pages because both sides are wrong. Both sides are wrong. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, now we're going down to reports of departments. Police Department Commander Jack Evans.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Board of Trustees, Madam Clerk. Uh, between May thirteenth and May twenty-seventh, we had three hundred and six calls for service, which resulted in five arrests. I also want to bring to everybody's attention that I received a text message. I don't know if anybody else got it. But it indicates that it's coming from the Secretary of State's office and that you owe a, a certain amount of money for back tickets. And you need to go to this website. I believe that that's a scam. Just be very careful what website you go to because I don't want anybody to be a victim identity theft. So, just be wary of that. I don't think that the Secretary of State's contacting people who get text messages. More than likely, you get a, a letter in the mail. And plus, you probably know if you had a ticket anyway. So, just be very careful when you get those text messages. And that concludes my report.
Thank you for that report. Moving on to five department chiefs, Stephen Pitts, Stephen Barrett.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Madam Clerk, and esteemed members of the Board of Trustees. I am pleased to report that from May thirteenth through twenty, uh, May, from May thirteenth through tonight, the Soft Village Department has effectively responded to a hundred and twenty calls for service, demonstrating our commitment and keeping our community safe. Uh, I want to mention that school is out and our weather is getting warmer. So, I want to emphasize the importance of vigilance on our road. Please drive cautiously through the neighborhoods, keeping out for our children as they play and enjoying their summer. Um, I also do want to remind the residents that we are still uh, holding a smoke detector program. And so, if you need smoke detectors in your home, uh, just contact the fire department at seven oh eight, seven five eight, two 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 five. That's seven oh eight, seven five eight, two 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 five. I know it's a lot of twos, but that's the number. Um, and they're completely free. So, you don't have to worry about paying for anything. Uh, we will come out and give you uh, your smoke detectors and you can get as many as you need for your home. Um, so let us all just work together and ensure a safe environment for our families and neighbors. And as always, stay safe and God bless. That concludes my report. Thank you, Madam Mayor, Madam Clerk, and esteemed members of the Board of Trustees.
Thank you, sir. Uh, we need to go back up to five E. Uh, trustee?
Clerk Williams.
Just here, the city has the village engineers report to me. We want that on record.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As discussed at the five twenty committee at the whole meeting, the resolution to authorize Soft Village's adoption of the twenty twenty-four update to the Cook County multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan will be voted on this evening. The twenty twenty-four update represents the combined efforts of Cook County and the participating communities to identify common threats and hazards the county faces, develop mitigation strategies, develop intergovernmental partnerships within the county, and share information with county residents. Adoption by the village of this twenty twenty-four update is necessary in order to qualify for federal funding associated with a declaration of disaster. Chief Barrett represented Soft Village during the plan developing process and can provide additional information on Soft Village's plan. The village public works department, in conjunction with GLCAP, otherwise known as GLCAP, continues to prepare for the upcoming Build Up Cook Fire Hydrant Replacement Program. Vows are being exercised in preparation for this program, which is expected to begin in July. The DCEO grant-funded Merrill Avenue Water Replacement Project will include a replacement of approximately two thousand feet of water made between two twenty-first Street and Strasburg Avenue is officially out to bid. Bids will be opened by the mayor at the June tenth board meeting. Thank you very much. That is from Melanie Arnold from Robinson Engineering.
Thank you. I'm going to jump now to six D. And even though on the agenda, there's internal audit, that person now is our village administrator, Anthony Finch.
Thank you, Mayor, Board, residents. Um, I provide you guys a copy of the cash flow balance as of today. Unfortunately, uh, we have, still have not had access to the other bank account. So, as you see, excluding the Illinois Fund Bank Account. So, this is the bank account that currently we have access to. The mayor is currently working to get the access to the remaining three bank accounts. Um, in addition, you all have the agency report. Um, as some of the residents have stated, and the mayor and the pastor, um, we do need a piece in this village. The agency report, as you guys can see, is five hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. This is not all of the past due invoices. The um, young lady that's been working hella hard out has not been in them all in the system, but these are the ones we do have. So, I'm pleading with the board tonight, if you guys can pass the accounts payable, because at least five hundred and fifty thousand is over thirty days past due. And since day one, there's not gone a day by, there's not a day gone by that the mayor or myself has received, haven't received a phone call that something has been cut off. And not to be a boogeyman or anything like that, we have had things from gas, as was stated a couple of weeks ago, to the insurance for the buildings and vehicles, to as last Friday, the health insurance for the employees. So, if you can find it in your heart to do the right thing, vote on these accounts payable because they are past due. Even the cleaning company, as of today, is threatened to no longer be in this village because they are six months past due.
Six months?
Six months, yes, ma'am. The other thing, um, as one of the residents mentioned, next Tuesday, I will be giving the trustee preliminary audit. I mean, an audit budget for them to review. If you guys can remember, a few weeks ago, I gave them the financial policy for discussion on June seventeenth to allow time for anybody to ask questions, to come to village hall during the day, or even in the evenings to ask questions. So, when it is a time for us to have a budget meeting, we have dialogue and not just um, a flat-out no on the budget or whatnot. One thing I do, will say, it is challenging to try to find the financials that will go into this audit because currently they are not in the system. So, I will have to contact the state and Cook County to find out what are the actual revenue numbers that were sent to the village. But the trustees will be getting a preliminary audit to look over on next Tuesday. And then sometime, uh, with myself and the mayor, we'll coordinate a day for the first budget meeting. But the goal is to get the budget done by the end of the month because with the exception of public works, all departments have turned in a budget. It's just a matter of looking at that budget and making sure it fits in guideline with our rev, uh, reverence. With that, Mayor, that concludes my report.
Uh, thank you. I heard you say that they will all be given an audit. Did you actually mean budget?
I meant to say budget, yes. They, they will receive a preliminary budget, which is going to be in an Excel file that is always in. And they will be able to look at by department, the line item, and everything of that nature.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Would you please entertain from the village clerk? Would you please entertain from the village clerk, a budget for the elected officials?
Yes.
And will you please remember to take off from your chart of accounts those items that are attributed to the elected officers and they're not elected officers?
Yes, I have those.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any questions?
So the budget review, you said we, did you give us the timeframe? Is that in due, what like Madam Mayor said or?
Yeah, so I'm going to give you the, um, first sample draft for the budget next Tuesday for review. At that meeting, um, if you have time and you want to discuss it, you can discuss it. But I want to make sure everybody have an amount of time to review it, go through the pages, especially the new trustees, so that any question can be addressed. So that when we start having an actual budget meeting with the department head, those questions from the trustee's perspective can already be addressed. And now it's just a matter of understanding what each department head would like in their budget and does it fit the overall budget of the village.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, sir. Public Works Director Mary Gates.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Board Members of Residents. The Public Work Department remains committed to maintaining reliable infrastructure and delivering quality public services to enhance the quality of life for Salt Village residents. This report outlines key activities, accomplishments, and plans from May 13th to present. Streets and Road Maintenance. Public Works currently has repaired 36 potholes, using a little bit over a ton of hot patch. Weather permits, we will be repairing many more potholes in the village. Also, um, due to the storm on May 15th, we've been swamped with branch and tree removal. We completed roughly 80% of the removal, although some residents probably think we haven't, but we have, but residents keep putting more and more branches, tree limbs out. So, but we are committed to serving the community and we will do as many as possible as time permits. Sewer and water, we have no reported water main breaks, but we do have two minor water main leaks that were reported and they were addressed by senior operators. Uh, sewer line jetting, um, we had a resident that her sewer backed up on our end and it was a mess, I'll just say that. And, uh, we had to contract to work out with M and J Plumbing and we worked with them and resolved that problem for that resident in the same day, within 24 hours. Facility and grounds, um, the village buildings, uh, we just, general maintenance plumbing has been completed, our regular stuff. Also, the community center, all the events have been cleaned and vacuumed. And there was a minor sinkhole in front of the, um, community center, like a right adjacent to the parking lot. And we had, it was reported that a few elderly residents had fallen over there. We actually repaired that today. We found out about it today and we repaired it today. Um, projects and capital improvement, Public Works have been working along with GLCAP and, um, we are scheduled for GIS mapping training, which will enhance Public Works Department and the Water Department in locating, in locating fire hydrant valves and everything of that nature in the village to make a more efficient workplace. Um, cool. Also staffing, we're in the process of hiring new help, summer help. Currently we've hired one new operator and onboarding, and the onboarding process has started. He's also enrolled in CDL training in case he wants to carry on past summer help. Residents requests and complaints, um, a total of 53 resident service requests were received. Uh, response rate is 90% within 48 hours. Common concerns from the residents are potholes, tree limbs, removals, landscaping issues, and water billing inquiries, which I forwarded to finance, um, and billing. Looking ahead, Public Works, uh, along with Robinson Engineering and GLCAP, um, we're, we're in the middle of completing the remaining valve exercises for the fire hydrant replacement project. Installation of all speed bumps are also scheduled for this week. The problem with the speed bumps were, um, honestly, I couldn't locate them. And trustee brought it to my attention last week and I got on top of that and I located all the speed bumps and they will be installed this week. Um, and I'm also exploring options for streetlight replacements and I met with a contractor to evaluate outsourcing that work. And that completes my report for this time's matter.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that with the report trustees.
Okay, I have Mr. Gates. Um, I know you're tired of hearing about the trees and the branches and all. Can you give me, would it be possible if you could give us an estimate on where you are? Are you on the south side or how far are you away from getting to the north side of the village?
Um, well, honestly, we've completed the entire village. I know it probably don't seem like it, but we've been through every side of town and now we're double backing. Because like I said, residents, they put stuff out and we remove stuff and they bring stuff. And also, a lot of the branches are not from storm damage. People bring things from their backyard. So we were trying to take, um, you know, the stuff from the storm damage first, the larger limbs. And now we're doubling back around. Like we have one truck that does this, you know, with the whole village, 9,000 residents. We have one truck and one shipper. So I would just ask for the residents to be patient. And if they, if it's urgent, like urgent, the calls that I receive, I've addressed them immediately. So we just ask for, you know, the residents to have some patience with us and know that we will be there to pick them up. And a lot, and some, some branches pickups, some of the pickups are developers. Developers are cutting trees down and just putting them in the parkways and expecting for Public Works to pick them up. So now with the new code enforcement, a lot of the stuff that the residents see, you know, it will be addressed because we have code enforcement. Like the mayor said, they had a lot of grates and that shall be in this too, so, yeah.
Right. From my personally, I have a tree that happened during the storm. It covered our whole driveway. So it's still there. We had to move it because it was, because it was blocking our driveway. It's not like little twigs. This is like a whole half of a tree that's sitting there on, in front of our home. So, and that's not something that we drew from the back. This is, when you come on that block, I'll talk to you later about the block.
No, no problem. I have no problem with addressing any resident that addressed me personally with it. That way I can address the situation hands-on. So the way Public Works goes, I'm the director, I have a staff. I assign staff, attest labor for the day and they're supposed to do it. And so I'm one person I have to, I try not to have to double back on them all the time. But if there's an issue, like, and I know your area should have been hit and you called me and say, hey, Director Gates, uh, my tree is there. I will personally make sure that is handled and I'll address my operators as and why that wasn't picked up. Because like I said, every area has been addressed and that shouldn't be there.
Okay, because we followed all the appropriate steps. We filled out the service form and we came up to make, uh, build out another one, I believe you did. So that's why I'm bringing to you.
Okay, I'll address it.
Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you. Good night, sir. Moving on. Reports and/or comments, and I'm not expecting reports, um, just yet. But comments from the Board of Trustees. Trustee Burns.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to make some comments. It's, it's amazing how when our, when our personal lives, our personal homes are broken, when we need branches picked up or we need sewer lines cleaned, but we need services from this village. We have trustees here that want trees removed, branches removed, whatever has to be done. But yet at the same time, you refuse to vote to pay for gas for that Public Works Department, that Fire Department, that Police Department to be able to operate those vehicles that has to go around and pick up branches and trees and whatever else you need, it takes gas. But when you sit up here as a trustee and you vote against that, then you ask the question, when are you coming to pick up my leaves and my branches? Well, they don't have gas to move around because that same trustee voted them not to have gas. What do you want? What do we want? Because that's what's going on right now. We're having a whole conversation about leaves and coming around with vehicles that need gas. And if it, if it doesn't get to you in time because you voted for them not to have gas, how do, what do you say about that? So again, you all, you all voted for these people to be here.
That's right.
You voted for these people. And I will recommend that you have questions for the people you put in these seats. Because again, all the departments are struggling to drive vehicles because they don't have gas. Because these three trustees keep voting for them not to have, I'm sorry, my bad. I'm sorry, Mayor, thank you so much. But again, you're asking for something that we can't give if we're not paying the bills. It's just as simple as that. If these lights go out, you're going to wonder why it's, the lights are out. Or it's cold or it's, or we don't have air in the summer. You're going to wonder why it's too hot in here or it's too cold. These are bills that must be paid. What is any of our excuse for not paying bills? For not being paying bills? So, so again, so again.
Oh, give me a minute. The, give me a minute. Thank you very much. The way the discussion is going right now appears to be offensive to some of the trustees as well as some of the residents.
Definitely.
Excuse me. And I'm going to respectfully ask that when we communicate, when we discuss, we do not point fingers. I mean, I'm not trying to limit your voice, but I will control the decorum in this space. Am I clear? So I have asked that we don't mention names. It is okay to say the trustee, blah, blah, but we don't want to be offensive. And especially not saying it three or four times because then that puts even more to it. And we have been so cool and so wonderful. And the decorum has been absolutely fantastic. I want our meeting to end just as we've started, okay? Can everyone agree to that?
Yes.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it. Let's continue on.
I cannot vote for accounts payable and I can't do diligence and, 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 and do what I need to do for the residents of Salt Village without being truthful and what's going on with accounts payable. And thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, we have now come into reports of committees and commissions. And the first one is the Senior Advisory Committee.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Madam Clerk, Trustees and Residents. This is Senior Advisory Report. Breakfast Bingo is every first and third Friday from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. in the Senior Center. Come and enjoy a free breakfast, free bingo and win prizes. Also, the Senior Fit Class, which I am the instructor, is held in the Senior Center every first and third, first, every Tuesday and Thursday, excuse me, every Tuesday and Thursday from 10:30 to 11:30 in the Senior Center. Come out and join the seniors. You must be 50 and older. If you need any more information, contact me and we give that class for free. Game Night. Game Night is every second and fourth Friday in the Senior Center from 4 to 8 p.m. Come join us for games. We have Big Wiz, we play dominoes, we play spades, we have Uno. Just bring a partner and enjoy yourselves. Our next senior outing will be Wednesday, June 25th. Meet us at the Stardust Bowling Hour in Dyers from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. The cost is $12 per person, but that includes two games, your shoes and refreshments. Our next committee meeting will be Thursday, June 12th in the Senior Center at 5:00 p.m. and all are welcome. Please come out and give us suggestions to help our seniors to keep moving, keep growing, keep living. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Next up is Fire and Police Commission. Chairperson Francine Anderson.
The report for the Salt Village Police and Fire Commission is as follows. We are currently in the process of giving the sergeant exam and that is the only current thing that's on our agenda and table at this point. Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. The Trustees, thank you.
Don't you have a date for that exam?
It's only for the sergeants and yes, we are using the 30th as part of the exam and, and as well as June 6th. It's a two-part series.
So May 30th and June, okay.
And June 6th.
Thank you. Pointe Duster is not here. Presentation of ordinances and resolutions. The first one, may I have a motion to approve a resolution authorized for the village to extend a line of credit with O National Bank? Some more? It's been moved and seconded, um... David, sorry, David.
I don't want me to just call you that.
Please call the roads.
Trustee Burns.
Yes.
Trustee Johnson.
No.
Trustee Jones.
No.
Trustee Sap.
Yes.
And Trustee Sterling.
No.
I now feel like the past, the former mayor's felt when he would speak after a vote. The line of credit is very important. It's not used that often, but if it's needed, it's there. All it needs is to be renewed every year. If you don't approve it this year, considering what our credit is right now, then next year, when we're going to apply for a line of credit with our credit being in doubt, we will not have access to $550,000 if it's needed. We've not used it. But it's great to have that cushion here. It's great to have that cushion. Especially when you consider that our 20 fellows are extremely non-feeable. And we voted to have a $50,000 deductible on any insurance claim. Or is it 500,000? What? 500,000? I'm not asking you to speak. Please. Thank you. We have to be fiscally responsible and think about what we're doing here, how we're setting up the village of South Village to completely fail. To completely fail. We had to go and... Because we missed the deadline for extending the line of credit. And we begged and pleaded with them to give us just one more week because we thought that we would vote on it tonight and it would be approved. Come on, people. Come on. Don't let us go out like this. Don't let us... Don't do this to us. Moving on. Who to? I'm sorry. May I have a motion to approve a resolution? I'm sorry, I didn't call for the vote. Did I? Thank you. Who to? B. May I have a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the adoption of the update of the Cook County Multi-Juridicial Hazard Mitigation Plan?
Some move.
May I have a second? It's been moved and seconded. Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Jones? Trustee Sapp?
Yes.
Trustee Sterling?
Yes.
Trustee Burns?
Yes.
What did Mr. Mayor used to say, the former mayor? When did y'all have a meeting? When did y'all have a meeting? Y'all was having a meeting, and y'all discussing what you're gonna do and how you're gonna do it. Okay, moving on to C. May I have a motion to approving ordinance amending Section 2-68 of the Municipal Code of the Village of South Village entitled Standing Committees? As I mentioned last week, these are only for the committees, not the logistics that's under it. We just need the standing committees to be updated in our ordinance. May I have a motion? Second.
Trustee Jones? Trustee Sapp?
Yes.
Trustee Sterling?
No.
Trustee Burns?
Yes.
Trustee Johnson?
No.
Motion fails.
Are we gonna do this for the next two years? Going on D. Okay. Motion to... May I have a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the letter of engagement with Lord of Bag and Amen LLP for auditing services? Some move? Trustee Burns made the motion. May I have a second? Trustee Sapp seconded the motion.
Trustee Sapp?
Yes.
Trustee Sterling?
No.
Trustee Burns?
Yes.
Trustee Johnson?
No.
Trustee Jones? Motion fails.
Residents, keep the faith, please.
I have no faith no more. I'm sorry.
Going on to 9E. May I have a motion? May I have a motion to approve an ordinance amending Chapter 82 regarding cannabis zoning for the Village of South Village, Council of Cook, State of Billings, Illinois? May I have a second? Hearing no second, that motion fails. May I have a motion to approve an ordinance of the Village of South Village, Cook County, granting a special use permit for the operation of an adult usage cannabis dispensary on the property located at 1699 through 1715 South Trail, South Village, Illinois? I need a motion. Some move? It's been moved that we adopt F. May I have a second? Hearing no second, that motion fails. Okay? Going on to unfinished business. May we have a motion to approve the request for sponsorship from the South Village Athletic Association in the amount of $4,500? And I just need to make one little small correction. Okay, okay, okay. I just need to make a little small minor adjustment because that item should not have gone under unfinished business. But I'll take the motion however it comes. But in honesty, that would go under petitions, agreements, and action items. I'm sorry I did not catch that earlier. Okay? But since I've called for it, we have a motion and a second. Clerk, please call the roll. Oh. No, we have a motion on the floor. May I have a second? It's been moved and seconded. Now who?
Trustee Sterling?
Yes.
Trustee Burns?
No, 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 no.
No? Johnson, Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Jones? Trustee Sapp?
Yes.
Motion carries. Very good. Thank you. Moving on to new business, financial matters. Where's my county? Can I see yours? Your plan? No, county bill. Thank you. May I have a motion to approve transfers payable and accounts payable distribution in the combined amount It's been moved. May I have a second? Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. There we accept the motion. Village clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Burns?
Yes, this is for county bill.
Yes. Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Jones? Trustee Sapp?
Yes.
Trustee Sterling?
Yes.
It's not... I'm sorry, there's a...
So, my question is, do we have enough in our account? We need to know where it's coming from. That's my question.
A lot of credit if we could approve.
I'm not asking you.
Oh, this is...
I'm not asking you.
This is in discussion, so we can't...
So, my question is, looking at this grant, are we gonna sign it up and go have it up to pay this council payable?
Mr. Finch, can you address that?
If you look at the report, there's $3.9 million in unrestricted funds. The accounts payable is $500,000, so that's a yes. The rest of the payroll, as I explained two weeks ago, has already came out of the bank account.
And going forward, we will entertain questions on motions after the second. After it's been seconded, but I didn't ask for it this time, but forgive me. Going on to 11B, under petitions, agreements, and action items. I, may I have a motion to terminate the contract between the Village of South Village and the internal auditor Anthony Finch, considering... No, we can move forward. I was gonna say that it was moved, but really it's not the same. You could still come back and say, "Oh, I still have that contract" when it's signed. So, let's move forward with that motion. May I have a motion? Some move? Trustee Burns?
I move for the motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any questions, debate, Madam Mayor?
What I could see for this motion was a blank piece of paper with my trustees' signatures on it. In the future, can we have these signed off by the people that look at me? Do I have that? No, actually, you're supposed to... When you present this, you're supposed to show the evidence. Okay, I was just making a note of that right now, that I didn't have that. In the future, can you present your documents with a form of trustees approving the action that's about to be taken? Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor, and it's been seconded.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Jones? Trustee Sapp? Trustee Sterling?
Yes.
Trustee Burns?
Yes.
Motion fails.
Item 2, motion to terminate the contract between the Village of South Village and the Office of Inspector General John Howard, effective June 27, 2025.
Some move?
May I have a second? Thank you. It's been properly moved and seconded. Any questions, comments, debates? We have one.
Sure, so why would you terminate a service that you don't pay when you take us forward? We're not filled with a contract. So, why not allow him to complete the contract?
Is that contract over in June? The end of June, I believe?
September.
Okay, who has a second to enter that? Of course, the board has to make that decision. However, it seems kind of fun-wasting if we have to be sued to pay him what we're gonna pay him anyway. So, if he has a contract which expires very soon, why not allow him to complete it? That's my question. I think I would like to revisit the content of his contract. As I said, I just under the impression that it ended at the end of June. But then also, I would like to look at the translation process just so that there is clarity among all of us. However, this vote must proceed forward. So, now we have a motion to table item 2 in terms of terminating John Howard. Is there a second? Hearing no second, then that motion fails? Yes. Can I do my turn? It failed. The table failed. That was the vote. That was the vote that we were doing to table. She made a secondary motion. There was no correction either? No. Okay, so the motion to table... The motion to table failed. Now, we will go back to the original motion, which was to terminate the contract. And with that, Trustee Johnson moved and Trustee Sterling seconded. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Jones?
Yes.
Trustee Sapp?
No.
Trustee Sterling?
Yes.
Trustee Burns?
No.
Trustee Jones?
Yes.
Motion fails.
Thank you. I'm not gonna have very many comments, but I do have a couple. And I noticed that as we proceeded into the meeting, a number of you trustees allowed the mayor to call for the motion and to call for the second, and then we take the vote. What happened to little girl here today? It's the same thing that happened a couple of weeks ago. And trustees jumped with your seconds and then they don't even vote, okay? We can't do that. We have to take it in order, in order for us to be in order. So, hear me that. Village stickers are on sale. And on the village sticker is a place for you to place your email. That information will help our clerk, but then it will also help the village as a whole because we're going back to the email system that we used to use through constant contact, so we need that. I do wanna really thank all of the volunteers and our people who were at the memorial celebration yesterday. But those of you who helped in the time of need and crunch, you know that we appreciate you. We appreciate the Fire Department who stood tall and strong as they posted the colors and everything. We appreciate those who adored the apron and served up the food. No, we really cooked the food and then served the food. Thank you so much. Committee reports. It is the expectation that the trustee... I'm sorry, that the village clerk will receive everyone's report by at least 10 o'clock Friday preceding the meeting. Okay? We're not talking about this one person, so you don't have to smile because you know you can have it. I'm not looking at any... I'm trying not to look at anybody in particular, okay? But know that you have to turn your report in by 10 o'clock on Friday preceding, not the day of, or not not at all. I would like a motion to adjourn.
Some move?
May I have a second? Can we approve the adjournment of the meeting at 9:01? Thank you very much. Have a good night. Be safe.